It is seven o'clock. We have enough members on the call. So let's get started. Good evening and happy Thursday. No, happy Tuesday. I hope everyone finds themselves safe and sound, and I hope you enjoy today's meeting. We will start off with a pledge of allegiance. So if you can, place your right hand on your heart and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, team. I'll now hand it over to Abita.
Good evening as I shift over. Thank you. We're going to go ahead and jump right into our budget hearing for our fiscal year budget 2021. And the way we're going to start is we're going to do fiscal year 2021 budget first, and then we'll take questions, and then we're going to take a five-minute break so that way people can stretch, take care what they need to. And then we'll go into the Student Opportunity Act budget as well, presentation. We are doing both tonight. Even though we don't know if we're going to get Student Opportunity Act or not, we have some hope and we're going to keep hoping. And so the point of us doing SOA tonight is to have a plan in place should the Student Opportunity Act go forward. So and then we will be ready to execute. So it will be a bit of, it's going to be two separate presentations, one with our local budget and the other with Student Opportunity Act. And we'll take a break in the middle. So I'll go ahead and get started. And I wanted to thank our wonderful student, Jaylee Ortiz, for her beautiful artwork. I believe that this symbolizes what happened to us in our budget season. And I have a story to tell. So the topics that we have are General Fund and Chapter 70 budget that we're going to cover in our first budget. And then we'll cover Student Opportunity Act and then go through our next steps. Our vision is that we are a gateway school system that welcomes and educates all students. And we are so proud of Chelsea Public Schools. We have done so many wonderful things. Here are just a couple of highlights. This is not comprehensive, but these are our student achievement highlights. One thing that I like to highlight on this is that our English language learners have improved 13 points and showing substantial progress. We know that educating English language learners is very difficult. It takes special skill. And when we can move English language learners, that means we're moving all of our students. So we're very proud of that. Another thing that we're extremely proud of is that in our mathematics at high school, we've increased 14 points and AP calculus scores outperformed the state in globe. So we're extremely excited about the work that's happening. And then in our grades three through eight ELA, our average student growth percentile exceeded the state targets. So we are a school district that is on the rise. We have a solid, solid foundation. And this budget and Student Opportunity Act, our goal is to take our school district to new levels. We always have to have a strategy to make our achievements and reach our goals. And at the end of the day, we want every student to graduate digitally literate, which we have been pushed to do in the last couple of months, college and career ready and bilingual. We see that our students, most of our students come in with Spanish as a first language, and we see that as an asset. And we want to build on that and let our students know that this is, it is a blessing to be bilingual, and we're going to build upon that. So we really like to build upon those three components in our bridge to success. So when we started off our budget season in the winter of 2019, we were filled with joy and hope because we were living in a robust economic time. There was the hope of Student Opportunity Act looming, and we were just so excited. We were expected to receive almost $11 million from the Student Opportunity Act. And then in March, COVID-19 hit, and it hit us. I say it hit Chelsea Public Schools on March 10th because that's when we closed our first school. It was the Clark Avenue. And then the crisis just got worse and worse. And then revenues from the city and the state are now down across the board. Chapter 70 and local funds are also being reduced, and that we know. So we had to shift our budget. And as you know, we were ready to prepare our budget on March 10th and have our budget hearing on March 10th. It is now May 12th, and we're two months later, and we are having our budget hearing now with a completely different budget and different numbers. So that in mind, we did a lot of thinking about what was the best way to approach this budget because we don't have final numbers from the state, but we know the numbers are not going to be what we were projected to receive. So we decided as a community, as a school leadership team, that we would level our budget. We know that Chapter 70 and local funds are going to be reduced. And so that's why we decided the best plan of action would be to level. We will get final numbers between June and August. We don't know when. And so after we get those final numbers, we will revisit our budget like we did with our pothole money last year. We're going to have to adjust this. Additionally, we have not heard if we're going to receive the Student Opportunity Funds or not. But like I said, we're still going to move forward because we're going to have a glimmer of hope. And that's, we're going to continue to advocate for that as well. So what is a leveled budget? Under a leveled budget, we expect no new Chapter 70 funds from the state, no new local funds from the city. Our budget remains the same as it did last year. But underleveled funding, there are still increased mandated costs and fixed expenses that still have to be covered, and that creates the shortfall. So as we level fund our budget, we have a budget shortfall of 2.2 million due to unavoidable costs. So we had to make up 2.2 million. So our goals with this budget that we're presenting to you tonight is first, we have made every decision with integrity with the most important critical mission, and that is keeping teaching and learning at the center. We're not starting new initiatives, but we're going to continue with the goals and the vision of our strategic plan. And I believe this budget reflects good stewardship while maintaining integrity and taking care of our greatest resources, which is our employees and protecting our core business of teaching and learning. And so I'm going to hand it over to Monica Lamboy. She will be going through all the budget numbers. So Monica, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Thank you. I'll just start with a review of how public education funding is calculated in Massachusetts. If we move to the next slide. As we spoke to the school committee about before, the state starts with our foundation budget, which is what does it cost to educate all children who live in Chelsea? They then calculate the local contribution by looking at the local revenues, taxes, property taxes to determine how much can the local community contribute. Then the state's contribution called Chapter 70 is the difference between the total amount needed and what the locals can contribute. Then the state comes in and fills that gap between those two numbers. That gross number that represents all of Chelsea are taken out the tuitions for charter schools and vocational schools that our children have chosen to attend. Those are deducted from the total. Then there's a calculation for us as Chelsea Public Schools of the required minimum net school spending. And we have the gap between the Chapter 70 and the amount of the charter schools. So there's a graphic that follows, that sort of walks us through. If the whole circle represents the total cost for a child, all the children in Chelsea, the different pies represent in yellow our local share. The dark gray is the sort of the charter school tuition taken out of the pie. That wedge is sort of taken out of that whole circle. And the blue being the Chapter 70. So it gives you kind of a graphic image of all the different components to the budget and then the influence of the charter school tuition. So we can move on. In addition to Chapter 70 and local funding, we also supplement by actively pursuing grants and from the federal, state, and private level. And then we have revolving funds, which include our lunch funds, extended day fees. So looking at the current year as a snapshot to launch into next year, we'll have a pie chart that comes up that shows how the revenues are for fiscal '20. You want to move forward one. There you can see in red, Chapter 70 is the largest, single largest source of money for our district. But the city's contributed 25% of total revenues for fiscal '20. To that, we add the grants and the revolving funds. How are we spending those dollars in the current fiscal year? The largest sector of our budget are our people. We're in a people business. So labor and the insurances that go along with that is just under three quarters of our budget. Then you'll see special education costs, which are the non-labor components, the tuition for out of district, other kinds of services for the students, including translation, transportation facilities, information technology, and supplies. This is pretty stable from year to year, how we allocate the dollars. Moving into enrollment, our revenues are directly influenced by our enrollment. As our enrollment grows, we get a per pupil amount of monies. And should our enrollment decline, which it has not been happening in Chelsea, there are influences to the revenues at that point. If you move to the next graphic, kind of shows the story of Chelsea starting from the early 2000s, where from 2003 to about 2010, relatively stable enrollment, then a rapid, rapid increase of almost 1,000 students in a very short period of time. And then we're now up at a new plateau. This is around the 6,300 students in district. We are projecting for 2020 level enrollment. That was our projection before the pandemic, and that's what our 2020 budget is based on. So moving into fiscal '21 revenue forecast, as the superintendent said, we are proposing a level budget. We're anticipating a level budget at this point. If you move forward. So again, just to reiterate, no increase in Chapter 70, no increase in funding from the city, no increase in our charter school reimbursements. Those are revenues. And we are expecting a minor increase in charter school expenses because the charter school enrollment has increased slightly. We calculated that by number of charter school students, but based on the 2020 charter school per pupil rate. And there's a table that follows that sort of shows you this in numeric form. So we have a column for fiscal '20, a column for fiscal '21. If you focus on the top two rows, you'll see dollar for dollar, Chapter 70 and the city contribution. No change between the two years, zero difference. Moving down a little further, the charter school revenue, no change. And then you see the charter school tuition, where we're estimating an additional 182,000 to be going to the charter schools. So overall, for us in '21, we have a level budget, but there's a slight downturn, which is the charter school tuition. So slightly lower. We're now projecting $96.5 million for fiscal '21, and that's what the following slides are based on, that figure. Now we turn to what are the costs that do inevitably change and grow? And from that, it's going to tell us what the gap is that we're trying to close on the next slide. So as the superintendent said, if you look at the bottom, we have just about a $2.2 million gap. The components to that include our labor, our cost of living increases per the agreements that are in effect on July 1st, steps as people move up in their tenure. They move up a steps in their salary scale, insurances, retirement costs. We typically predict for an increase in special education tuition. 4% is the figure there. That's about consistent with the last four or five years. Special ed transition interpretation. We do have an obligation to make sure that our families get the materials translated and they have access to interpretation. The costs for that are rising. And you can see the other cost drivers, including a few positions that were formerly grant funded that we are proposing to continue. So on the next slide, we'll look at how we think we can close the gap in the budget that we're proposing. First and foremost, before getting into the details, this budget attempts to not reduce any of the personnel that we have that is not, other than related to enrollment. So we are trying to stabilize and to sort of freeze our workforce so that when we get the other numbers, we have that foundation of our existing staff, our existing workforce that are working so hard for our children. Right now, they will be with us when we get the final numbers from the state. And hopefully, there'll be positive numbers, but we'll at least have that foundation together. So almost everything here has to do with cutting non-labor. Salary contingency is just a count that has some salary dollars. We're looking at some one-time cuts from increases. We're proposing no increase in special ed out of district tuition. I am hoping to bring forward to the school committee an action to prepay part of our '21 tuition using $20.20, which is allowed under state law. And should we do that, that's going to take a burden off of the fiscal '21 budget, which is allowing us to make this hopefully one-time cut. And then almost all the other cuts are non-personnel related. One position in the superintendent's office is proposed to be cut. So now looking in, what are the implications at the school and the program, programmatic level? At the Early Learning Center, due to enrollment, we do need to add a social communication classroom to remain in compliance with state law. So we're proposing to add, even in this cut budget, a social communication teacher and two paraprofessionals. At the elementary schools, we are still committing to increase our Camino's program. We'll be adding two first grade classes at no cost to the budget by converting two classrooms into Caminos. Using grant funds, we are trying to supplement our resources by adding a math interventionist and adding one parent liaison at the elementary level that will now give us two parent liaisons for the four schools to really be able to access and reach out to our families in even a better way. One fourth grade class is being reduced at the elementary level, which we knew was going to happen because the upcoming third grade has fewer students than the outgoing fourth grade. At the middle school level, we're still moving forward with moving Caminos into the seventh grade at the Brown. We are, under this proposal, going to do it at a cost neutral, no new resources. But we are moving forward with that. We are not going to stop that program. It's so valuable. In addition, at the middle school levels, using grant funds, we're proposing to add an ELL teacher. Adding two parent liaisons at the middle school level will give us a total of three. So one liaison per school at the middle school level. Moving on to the high school level. We don't have any positions proposed for Chelsea High School, but this school committee will recall last year where we had cuts in the high school. We've really, with all of our schools, held them without any cuts at this point. Chelsea Opportunity Academy, we will continue to expand enrollment. At Chelsea Opportunity Academy, it's a multi-year program. We're going to do it even with limited resources. In order to maintain the stability at Chelsea Opportunity Academy, though, some of their grant funding is moving away. So we're proposing to transfer a half of a guidance counselor and one history teacher from Grant onto the general fund. Special education district-wide, the increase was for translation and interpretation that we are obligated to do. At the district-wide level, at the superintendent's office, we're proposing to reduce by 1.75 FTE. That includes a special assistant to the superintendent and the completing our succession planning efforts is reducing 0.75. We are proposing to add 0.25 administrative intern. This is a Harvard intern where we are only funding one-fourth of the total cost. And Harvard University is providing three-quarters, which we think is a really valuable program for us. And this new resource is going to work with us on parent relations and community outreach, particularly in this format where we don't know what next year's classes are going to be like. Maintaining that relationship with the parents and keeping close contact with our community is of paramount importance. So just to summarize, to look at the additions and reductions at the different grade bands, this table includes, we have a total of 5.5 net change, including five new grant positions. So you can just see where the different changes are and the 1.5 of new grant positions that were on the grant that are moving on to the general fund. Now we use the same data, but looking at it in terms of the type of position, instructional, student support, paraprofessionals, administrative, and other. Again, total net change of 5.5 total positions across all funds, including our grant funds. And be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Monica, thank you so much for presenting. I have a quick question on the last slide, if you don't mind. I noticed there isn't any additions to the student supports. And granted, we know that we are dealing with a very tight budget. I'm wondering if we have exhausted all options and can hopefully perhaps add a social worker or some type of support for our students next year, given that we'd be coming back from this pandemic. And I feel as though they'll need it.
I can go ahead and take that question. Chair Kelly, thank you for asking that question. And you're absolutely right. So we are very conservative right now with this budget. As I said, it's leveled. If we should come out, if by chance we come out a little better than what we're projecting, then we will definitely look at adding in that area. We currently have 17 social workers. We have also, over the years, that the one area that my predecessor has really focused on is SEL. So that is an area that has actually been grown over time. So we are in a really good place. Is it the place that we want to be now, especially in light of the crisis? But we are in a really good place right now. And what you'll see when we do the Student Opportunity Act presentation, you're going to see the result of this, of everything that we've been through. You're going to see that, and you're going to see a few changes in SOA. Should we get funding, you will see a lot of support and student support in that area. Right now, we're just, this is bare bones right now.
Other questions on the general fund, Chapter 70 component of the budget? This is the budget hearing component of our evening.
Any comment?
I would just. I will just ask if we have any bill number or anything that people who are looking at us, that they can reach out to the legislators and help us to advocate for more funding. As we see, we are really tight and it's really concerning that, you know, we still haven't heard anything on what's going to look like after the pandemic for the fiscal year of 2020 to 2021.
Thank you. Thank you. We do have later on this agenda a resolution that will be read a second time advocating for the Student Opportunity Act.
I have a question. So my question is, so does this budget reflect our Plan B, that everything has to be remote learning? We're not able to get back into the buildings physically. You know, it's uncertain times. And I know the big scare is going back too soon, and then we have another outbreak. So are we safe with this budget that it will cover either if we're there physically or if the kids are all home remotely?
Thank you. I know Monica, and I'm going to let Monica speak more to this because a lot of what we're, we have to budget for is PPE. We have to budget for staggered schedule, and those things have to be negotiated with our local unions. Cleaning, extra cleaning supplies, lunch in the classrooms. So a lot of its facilities. And Monica, would you like to speak a little bit to how we're addressing this already and thinking about it?
Thank you for that question. We're doing a lot of work right now and honestly trying to buy a lot of supplies now in the current budget because of the fact that we're remote. Some of our expenditure lines aren't being expended at the way they normally would. So we're trying to deploy those savings into both technology and facilities. I will have at least one more budget transfer to bring forward before the end of the year. So in terms of technology, you already approved a transfer so we can double our Chromebook order because we know when the Chromebooks are at home, they're getting a lot of utilization. And so we want to make sure we have extra devices to deploy. We are buying more cleaning fluids, masks, child-sized masks, hand sanitizer, and then meeting to talk about various alternatives of cleaning schedules depending on how we want to bring students back next year. We're doing a lot of brainstorming now, but trying to use all of our dollars wisely to equip us for next year because I know it's going to be lean.
So, and I can chime in on that. We've been doing a lot of the research already, trying to figure out like what other countries, like Denmark has already opened up. And the PPE, we're ordering thermometers. We're getting everything ready with this year's budget. So we have it for next year. We're being wise with what we have right now so that way we'll be ready. And in this way, we're, because we already know that next year is going to be tight. So let's take, we're going to take advantage of what we have now. And we're scrolling away, but we're spending wisely right now so that we will be ready in the fall. And thankfully, we were a district that had enough Chromebooks. We had, well, we had 6,000 Chromebooks for our students, not pre-K and kindergarten. But we were fortunate that we didn't have to scramble. We were also fortunate that we had purchased hotspots. And today, another district was just asking for our sample RFP for our hotspots. And we purchased before there was a crisis, a major crisis. So we were in a good place.
So could it be that maybe, like I said, because this is uncertain times, after this budget is approved, we may have to go back and amend certain items and
Yes, exactly.
Reflect the need.
We're taking, we're taking a very conservative approach. And then when we actually get the final numbers, we'll come back and we're going to have to revisit. We won't have to, we won't do a budget hearing, but what we'll do is numbers, we'll come back and we're going to have to revisit. We won't have to, we won't do a budget hearing, but what we'll do is we'll have our budget subcommittee go through that during our budget subcommittee and then take it to the whole. But we're going to have to adjust and we already know that.
Thank you.
Monica. This is Marisol. I just wanted to commend you all for your work, given that it's a brilliant, honest work. All this serious business and just seeing the thoughtful ways and like how we can continue to provide core services to the students and learning. I was really worried about what that could look like. So thank you for your efforts. And also seeing that we're still adding additional support, especially to social communication and then also noting there that we don't have layoffs. Now, I, my heart goes out because I did see the special assistant and I know that I mean, since the beginning of this process, he kept saying like, let's talk about what we want. Let's talk about what our students deserve. And I just want to commend that, you know, the whole school committee as a body and all the work with the community that's gone into that. So hopefully we can continue to be strong and keep advocating at the state level. So communities like Chelsea that have been hit the hardest, some of the hardest hit communities like Chelsea, will continue to get prioritization of some of these services so that our schools can be strong. And like Janie said, you know, thinking about safety, number one for everybody, whether in the building or outside. Just seeing, just hearing that, you know, we can have a process where we can revisit this as things evolve. But just seeing right off the, right off the jump, you know, I, it's, it's a difficult thing to do. So just thank you guys for your work on that as we go forward.
Thank you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
I want to thank the superintendent and Monica for all their hard work. I know we're in a difficult time and we're all in somewhat of a depression for the children and I'm not going to school, being in the classroom at this time. But I see you have everything in place. So when we do open, and if we do open, we'll have all the safety things we need for these students to come back to school and for the teachers too. So thank you, Monica and superintendent for all your hard work and putting all this together.
So before we take a break on the, we're going to take a break and while we're taking that five-minute break for everyone to stretch online on the presentation, we have that you can email, where you can email comments for the public hearing. So that will be here as, so you'll, you'll get to see where you can email your comments.
Thanks so much, Dr. Beta team. Let's now take five minutes to stretch if there are not, if you don't have any more questions. Thanks. Alrighty team, the time is now 7:40. I hope everyone had the chance to stretch and get the blood flowing. Let's bring it back. We'll give it a few seconds for everyone to get back. We're so excited to hear about the SOA. Alrighty team, it looks like we are all here. Dr. Beta, I'll leave it, I'll bring it over to you. Dr. Beta, you're muted.
Okay. So as, as we start, as we move forward with the Student Opportunity Act, this is the budget and the plan. And we have been working on this for quite some time. We started working on this actually in the fall as part of my entry plan and gathering information. So this has been a long time in the wait to actually present the final Student Opportunity Act budget plan to you. So we're very excited. At the same time, we're also moving forward cautiously, knowing that this may or may not be passed. We are hopeful that even in the future, we'll still receive some funding. And our goal presenting tonight is that we're presenting moving forward as if we're going to receive this funding and the hopes that we will. And, and, and when, if we do, we have a plan in place and we're ready to go. So we're very excited about that. So I will go ahead and, okay. Not sure why the, okay. So again, our vision, Chelsea Public Schools is we are gateway system that we welcome and educate all students and families. At the end of the day, we want our students to graduate digitally literate, college and career ready and bi-literate. Our goal is that our students will be able to compete in the 21st century, whether they decide to go to college or they decide to enter into a career. We want our students to be successful and we want them to be college and career ready when they leave Chelsea Public Schools. So as we go through this plan, you will see how we are supporting digital literacy, how we're supporting college and career readiness and how we're supporting bi-literacy. I've already gone over the highlights, but for those who are new, just joining us, we celebrate so many things in Chelsea Public Schools. Our grades three through eight ELA growth has exceeded the state targets. Our English language learners have improved 13 points, showing substantial progress. And then our high school mathematics have increased by 14 points on AP calculus. So we're really proud of all that we have to offer in Chelsea. We are a school district that is on the rise and we will continue to improve. So our budget development process, like I said, it was something that we've been planning for, for a long time for the Student Opportunity Act. We had 50 individual one-to-one meetings, various small focus groups. We met with internal and external stakeholders. We held four community conversations in different locations in the city in the fall. And then we reviewed, reviewed internal and external documents. And then we analyzed data from those interviews and meetings and, and we did a qualitative analysis of all that information. And then we had three more community conversations in February, once the Student Opportunity Act funds, once we knew how much we would be receiving. And then we conducted a survey for staff and community. And several months ago, I don't know if you remember, we presented the results of that survey to our community and that school committee. So what we heard, we grouped into four major categories over the time span. Those categories were rigorous teaching and learning, expand opportunity, access and equity, family and community engagement, and then operations to support teaching and learning. So rigorous teaching and learning and what we heard in this, that when we heard, when we looked at all of the data, here are just some of the things that popped. And if we heard something three or more times, we put it on the investments. Retain teachers so that they can build relationships, add more STEM, invest in our middle schools, invest in more emotional support for students, increase special education and English language learning, learner staffing, more after and before school programs, more expert-led professional development, redirect the dean at the high school and focus on leadership development and building our own pipeline of leaders. So that was category one. The second category is expand access, opportunity and equity. And so the investments there were expand the communes program, bi-literacy coordinator, build on the seal of bi-literacy, continuing to support the arts, increase special education at the middle grades, more before and after school, expand early college to the middle grades, increase college and career and add program for laptops for students to take home. So we, we did that already. I don't know if you're hearing a pattern here, you can see there was, there was an emphasis on the middle grades as well. And then family and community engagement, find creative ways to involve our families, educate families about student's education, increase the number of parent liaisons, which we already are working on. Build up, build up school site councils, improve our website for access, which we've already completed, improve translation services, and then use social media to communicate with families and share good news. And then the last was operations to support teaching and learning. We know that we have to have strong operations to support teaching and learning, invest in more technology and technical support. We want to do a better job of marketing our successes and then automate our business and human resources and look to identify a space for Chelsea Opportunity Academy and the intergenerational literacy program. And then the last was engage families in the budget process at schools to create more transparency. And throughout this process with the Student Opportunity Act, our goal was to increase participation, increase transparency, make sure all voices were heard. The Student Opportunity Act was signed into law in November, on November 26. The goal of SOA was, is to eliminate achievement gaps and to increase outcomes for low, a low-income special education students, students of different races, as well as students that are learning English by increasing funding and program to the districts with the highest percentage of students in these groups. That would mean, and by far, Chelsea, we were the second highest, where we received the second highest increase in, in aid per pupil. So that tells you that as a, as a system, we, we were desperately in need of, of money to, to bring equity to our system. And again, with this crisis, what we're seeing is that this, the districts that were slated to receive more funding from Student Opportunity Act are the same districts that have more of a crisis. And so this is why I think it's so important that we continue to advocate. The bill in general was a boost in investment in Massachusetts Public Schools by 1.5 billion, as slated to phase out through the next seven years. And, and like I said, we've received the second highest increase per pupil. The Student Opportunity Act funds are restricted. The new funding is restricted to certain areas to be allocated to programs that close achievement gaps and that are evidence-based. So the strategies that, there were 17 strategies that we could pull from, but as we heard from our community, we, the, there are certain categories that fell under three main areas, which is targeted student support, enhance core curriculum and talent development. So those are the three categories that we focused on heavily. And you'll see that in the next few slides coming up. And then school districts were to submit a plan by April 20th. And as you can see, it is May 12th. So we're, there was an extended deadline made by the commissioner and the legislature, but they have not given us any dates. And so we are walking in faith and we're just going to keep, we're going to keep talking as though we're going to receive this money someday and hopefully soon. So, so this is our revenue forecast. Before I turn it over to Monica, I just want to say we did do a shift. So we had presented this information a while back. And as a result of the crisis, we shifted. So we were going to originally put some money into hiring a couple coordinators to support the bridge. We postponed the hiring of those coordinators in this plan and we added social workers. We also added nurses instead. So you will see that and that is reflected as a result of this crisis. And we recognized that we needed to shift gears. So you will not see the coordinators until years two and three, because right now we recognize that our kids, when we come back, there's going to be, we're, we're going to need a lot of support. So we have shifted gears and I'm going to let Monica take it from here.
Thank you. So this table shows the total revenue for the city of Chelsea students from SOA. For those who were able to join us at the February community meeting, these numbers will look familiar. These are the numbers we reviewed then. So at the overall district level, city, city level, 12.27 million. And that is based on a combination of changes in enrollment, a combination of the per pupil rate, and then some factors relative to the low income count, where both we had some increased matches and then some formulaic matches to bring us to the 12.27 million. We move to the next slide. This is where we would see the difference for Chelsea Public Schools. After we take out the charter school revenue and the charter school tuition, because as we have an increase in per pupil, the charter schools have a parallel increase. So the, in the, the yellow in the bottom corner, the number that Chelsea Public Schools is working from is 10.934 million or an 11.3% increase should SOA be funded at the, the number that we have been given previously. So what wonderful, exciting things would we propose to do with those monies? Again, the DESI has the evidence-based programs. There are four total, as the superintendent said. Three of them fit us the, the best. Enhanced Core Instruction, Targeted Student Supports and Talented Development, Talent Development. And underneath these sort of four umbrellas are 17 priority programs. The next few slides are going to highlight our changes in the DESI framework. And then after that, we'll show you the same information at our school level, because that's how we're most used to, to looking at it, but it's all the same information. So if we move forward, under Enhanced Core Instruction, ECI point two is research-based early literacy. So there we're proposing to increase the part-time librarian position at the Mary Sue Burke Complex from .25 to full-time. We've had the .25 for a few years, but have been unsuccessful in finding a candidate who wants to work part-time. Also a stipend for lead librarian district-wide for early liter, for literacy in general. ECI point four is to implement high-quality aligned curriculum. There, we're proposing a computer technician. In this remote format, the technician is critically important and when we're at school, because of the numbers of devices. So if this would, if this is approved, it would provide us with one technician at the early grades, one at the middle school and one at the high school. I'm in addition, a STEM coach at the Early Learning Center and a coach for inclusion at Chelsea High School under aligned curriculum. Targeted Student Supports is where significant investments are proposed. Could you go back one more? Okay. TSS point six is supporting holistic student needs, that's supporting the whole child so that they are equipped to really engage in learning when they're in the classroom. As the superintendent mentioned, we're now proposing for nurses. Those are marked as limited duration intended for the pandemic era period. Um, those are marked as limited duration intended for the pandemic era period. So that we can do the temperature checks and have nurses available to respond if we do have students who are feeling ill, et cetera. Um, for social workers to really supplement the great work that's going on already. Um, an assistant director slash coordinator for special education. Um, our special education students are a large, uh, important subset of our students and, and that additional leadership is gonna help really um support all those students across Chelsea Public Schools. Um, two speech therapists that will allow our students greater access to speech therapy. Um, we're adding, proposing to add a B C B A, a board-certified behavioral analyst who would work with um children with autism or behavioral issues and work with the teachers that work with them as well. Continuing on with the theme of the holistic student needs, now looking at the um schools proper at the Early Learning, Learning Center, a coach for special education. Um, at, at the middle school, a number of positions really highlighting the emphasis that we're placing on, on our middle schools. Um, redirect teacher is intended to help support those students that are not able to be in class at this moment, to give them an alternate um teacher to work with as they um work on regulating themselves. Um, building substitutes so that when a teacher's out, we have already people on in our faculty who can um cover those classes. Um, that's six positions between those two. Um, a teacher for the seventh grade Caminos. Earlier, we said we would expand Caminos to the seventh grade with no new resources, but should up the Student Opportunity Act funded, we would take the opportunity to add that seventh grade teacher. Um, and then two paraprofessionals for Brown Middle School, one for special education and one for Caminos. More holistic student support, you can see the theme here. Um, at the high school level, at the upper grades, um, a dean of students to, to work with our students. Um, three general education teachers at the high school, one for math, one for science and one for health and P E. Um, two paraprofessionals for social communication to support our students now at the high school level, that population is growing. And a, um, at the Chelsea Opportunity Academy, again, now we're trying to add resources under, using the SOA at the Chelsea Opportunity Academy, one STEM teacher. Um, TSS point seven speaks to inclusion and co-teaching as a model for students with disabilities so that other educators are coming into the classroom with focused time spent on the students that are being included in those classrooms. So under this um uh area, we're proposing ten new E L L teachers, one for each of our ten schools. Um, but on average, and at the um seven special education teachers, um, each elementary school and each middle school would get a special education teacher. Then at um Chelsea High School and Chelsea Opportunity Academy, currently we have a shared position that's fifty fifty each for special ed, we're proposing to make that full-time. Um, so each would get half, we actually have a shared E L L teacher between this two schools and, and in this slide, those would be made whole as well. And at the Wright, Wright Science and Technology Academy, a coach for reading literacy and STEM, who will have a focus on working with students with disabilities. Um, TSS point eight is um our sort of expanded learning, the acceleration academies, which cover the break weeks and summer learning. Um, here, should we get um Student Opportunity Act funding? We're proposing to add money into this year's summer school so that we can accommodate an additional approximately three hundred and sixty students at a cost of a hundred and fifty-nine thousand and one dollars in stipend money. These are not possessed permanent positions, these are hours of teachers to work with students over the summer. TSS point nine, targeted student support, point nine is dropout prevention and recovery. This is where our Chelsea Opportunity Academy is really making such an important impact. Um, and under this theme, we would be supporting the relocation of COA and I L P. So at the bottom, you'll see the funding for the lease for a facility for those two, um, two schools and program. Um, under SOA, and in addition, the, the facility staff that would support that new location, a building maintenance worker, a security monitor. And also for Chelsea Opportunity Academy itself, a data management specialist who would really work with the fine-grained data for the students there to understand what's working for them, what their needs might be. And also to support operationally the school. Um, another one of the overarching is talent development. Um, here we have talent development point ten, diversifying the educator and administrator workforce. This is something the superintendent, the school committee has been really focused on. Um, here through SOA, we're proposing to add a recruitment and retention specialist whose role would be really to go find that talent, that diverse talent, attract them to Chelsea. And then help us um frame out additional ideas on, on making sure that we're retaining them. And um, as you know, we have the grant from the state, they would also help contribute to our efforts to implement the state grant for diversity. Um, and in general, there's funding in this one for um teacher and staff diversity. Talent development twelve, um, the theme there has a number of different things, but we're focused on strategic scheduling to enable common planning time for teachers. So by enabling common planning time, they can um really help make sure that curriculum is, that has continuity across all grades and across all classrooms. And we have funding, no new positions, but we have funding to enable common planning time in TD twelve. Um, in addition to the four overarching umbrella themes, the DESI also allocates some money for ongoing expenses. Um, not associated with new initiatives. Under this area, we are proposing to add a part-time grant writer, point two five F T E to help us make sure we are going out there, looking actively for all the grant opportunities for our schools and our students. Um, a modest amount of money for legal services and pick salaries. Um, here's where we're going to try to um return to the budget, the special education tuition that we had cut from the general fund. Um, hopefully it's just a one-time cut and this will help us put that back. Um, in addition, all of the benefits and payroll adjustments related to these new positions um we're putting in here because we have a centralized health line and it's just easier to manage if we put it under this category. Um, facilities funding for extraordinary maintenance and technology funding for equipment and software to make those operations whole. Now looking at the same information, I'll move through real quickly um at our schools, because this is how we're used to, to looking at the information by school or department. So at the Early Learning Center, um, across all of the initiatives under SOA, we're looking at adding three student, three teachers. Um, a coach for STEM, a special education coach and a E L L teacher. At the elementary school level, each of our four elementary schools will receive a special education teacher. Each school would receive a E L L teacher. And then the librarian that supports all of the schools happens to be budgeted within the Sokolowski budget. Eight point seven five. Um, middle school, um, you can see here sixteen new positions, really emphasizing that commitment to our middle schools and to strengthening them. Each school would have a special education addition, an E L L teacher, the redirect teacher and building substitute. In addition, at the Brown, um, that's support, that additional position for Caminos, two paraprofessionals and a coach for STEM and reading literacy at the Wright Academy. At the high school, nine additional positions, the dean of students, three general education um teachers to replace some of, some of the cuts that we had last year. Uh, math, science and health and P E. Uh, an inclusion coach, uh, one point five special education teacher, two paraprofessionals and some L teachers for the bridge program. And at Chelsea Opportunity Academy to support that um new site and the relocation. Um, again, making those two half positions whole, but adding a brand-new STEM teacher and the data management specialist. Uh, special education and people personnel, um, the assistant director coordinator for special ed, the B C B A, speech therapist. And then again, our four nurses and the four social workers that we think are gonna be so important for us next year. Um, the summer school that we talked about already, other, at the other instructional programs. Is on this slide. And improving operations to support teaching and learning, these are the central office and the support functions, the recruitment specialist, the grant writer and the facility staff, and then the one computer technician that we talked about previously. Um, if we look at our investment in positions by strategy, um, the targeted student supports, where our Ls were a special education, where our holistic students is obviously the, the vast largest amount. Um, but also enhance core instruction and talent development. This ratio could shift in future years as we are able to move and focus more on some of these other areas. Um, this is just the detail that goes with the pie chart that was previously, so you can look at the number of positions to be added within the different streams of the DESI framework. Um, this is the same type of table we saw for our general fund budget. Um, the numbers are definitely different than we saw in our chapter seventy general fund. Um, but it shows you where the additions are by grade band. And where there are some grant positions that are being converted over from grants onto the SOA. And uh, same data across the different types of positions, instructional, student support, paraprofessionals, administrative and other. Um, I will point out that the social workers, um, because of the way this table are, are under instructional. We often think of them as student support, so if you, the, the four nurses are in student support and the B C B A, and then the, the social workers are actually in instructional. But they're there.
So our considerations for year two and three, because this is a three-year plan. As we'd like to continue to build upon special education, English language learners, dual language in our interpretation pathways, you'll see the by literacy coordinator, we put off. Uh, digital literacy, we want to continue to support digital literacy. Uh, we got thrust into remote learning and we're excited about the opportunity that we have. Um, and adding a digital literacy coordinator down the road. And early college, we've already have a very strong early college program and we look forward to building that out more. Um. And some more considerations that we have are to enhance or add performing arts leadership and program funding. More STEM program, uh, extended learning programs, including an extended learning coordinator. Um, paraprofessionals to decrease ratios of students to teachers. Senior advisory and more summer, more school and summer school offerings for especially our middle and high schools. So any questions or comments?
I have a um, such a quick comment. Uh, I wanna just first of all, thank you all for all the work that has gone into, um, into this budget. Um, I do want to thank Ms. Garcia for bringing this up earlier, but I, I really appreciate the shift um to have more social workers from the earlier budget proposal. Um, after this pandemic, you know, it's gonna be really, really crucial that we support students as we transition back to the classroom, whatever that looks like, you know, staggered schedule, phase, phasing in, remaining online, whatever that looks like. Um, we're gonna really need to support our students as, as we manage that transition, so thank you for that. Um, but of course, you know, none of this is gonna be possible unless the state doesn't equitably fund the SOA as is required uh by the law, so I'm really looking forward to continuing to speak about, um, you know, speaking about our resolution uh shortly, but also to, to continuing to advocate for the, for the legislature to fund this. Um, just because, you know, our district has been struggling before this pandemic. And just because um other districts are now struggling, it doesn't change the inequities that already existed and that need to be funded, so, so I just thank you for all the work that you've done on this and I'm, I'm really looking forward to continuing to work with, with um my colleagues on this committee and in school committees across on the Commonwealth on this, because it's, it's really important that we don't allow this pandemic to um, to, to, to have us lose focus on, on the goals that, that we have for the district. Thank you.
Roberto, thank you for your advocacy and your writing.
I have a, a comment, I'm I'm pleased to see the amount of um work going into the middle schools. Um, in my years here on school committee. Not that we were purposely neglecting them, but I felt a little that way in seeing all the supports. Um, that could go into the middle schools if we get this funding. Um, it's very exciting to see, so I'm happy to see that. And seeing the early college program continuing, um, that's a big plus um for our students. I, I personally know some of our alumni, high school students who did the early college and there's a young girl already doing a master's degree um at age twenty-two because it helped her, so. You know, it's, everything is so exciting. Uh, like Dr. Beta said at the beginning, let's keep hope, um, that we keep this funding and like Mr. Jimenez said, we have to be aggressive and keep advocating um for these funds. And if the state of mass hasn't seen by this pandemic, the need that's in Chelsea by now, you know, then they're blindfolded because everything is coming out to the light. So thank you again for all the work and um, and putting our students first. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'd like to just take a moment to thank the central office and Dr. Beta for their constant uh work that they put in towards both of these budgets. Um, I know there is so much uncertainty right now, but as uh Ms. Velez just mentioned and Mr. Jimenez, our team is really trying their best to put our students first and, and it's great to be a part of this team. Uh, momentarily, uh, Dr. Beta will post the resolution. Um, and I will uh do a second reading and then we will add that to the agenda on Thursday for a vote. Uh, but it's practically, in, in summary, the resolution um is exactly what Mr. Jimenez and Ms. Velez just mentioned. Uh, we need to continue advocating uh for SOA funding, our schools need it, our students need it, Chelsea has um, is very vulnerable right now, our families and students need the extra support. Um, and so. Yeah, I hope, I hope we get it, but we have to stay hopeful, right? We, we need to keep pushing and stay hopeful and, and stay together as a team and work together as a team.
Hello? Just want to thank everyone for being on the, on the, uh, on the meeting today, I think the whole entire committee. I don't know what happened. Anyway, if you can hear me, just say, say something to somebody.
Yeah, you're good.
So I thank everybody for, for being a part of this, uh, this meeting, I mean, yes, difficult times for everybody. And all the different school systems and stuff, and uh, want to thank uh Dr. Beta and um her, her entire team at the central office for a great job, great presentation. Uh, one thing that uh was not discussed tonight was the Reach After School Program. Uh, is there any support there, any budget opportunities there for the Reach After School Program? Or any program like that, like Reach that we can uh discuss or squeeze some weight?
Um, thank you, uh, Mr. Wilson for bringing Reach Up. We are uh committed to supporting Reach and we have uh um, Adam Delaney has been working with Reach Program even during the crisis. And the task force and put together, is working on, we're calling Reach two point O. It is in the budget, it's, it's a fine detail and they're, they're brought, the, this is like the, like thirty thousand feet, if you will. But Reach is in there and um, Adam has been working diligently during this crisis to reimagine Reach, um, what we're calling. to reimagine Reach, what we're calling Reimagining. So he's been doing a fantastic job of working with everyone and with Stephanie.
Okay, would that be a part of the final budget that we're going to vote on this week?
Yeah, it's built in.
Okay, and you will show us where it's built in?
I can show you where it's built in.
All right, thank you.
Team, are there any questions before we move on?
Ms. Santiago has a question in the chat.
Okay, so Ms. Santiago has asked if we can skip the reading. Team, what do we think? Should we go ahead and read it? Or, I mean, it's a little different than the last reading. I'm happy to skip it, but we would take a vote on it on Thursday.
I think I don't have a problem with skipping the reading, just to save you the time, reading it for one. And, you know, we can make the document available online for people to read it if they want to have the actual text and just make sure that it circulates to everybody. So that's just, that's just me.
Chair Kelly, if you could maybe just go where you did make some amendments, maybe just highlight some of those?
Yeah, absolutely. Okay, so I will quickly review what I changed. And so, let's see, if we can scroll to, let's see, the second page, I added. I'm starting to read. Sorry, there was a lot of edits. Okay, I'm reading towards the end, okay? And so, whereas the Council of the Great City Schools, the National Education Association, the American Federation of Teachers, the National School Boards Association, the American Association of School Administrators, and the National Parent Teachers Association, and others have called for some $200 billion in relief for the nation's public schools. And whereas this level of funding is the minimum needed by the nation's urban public schools to sustain and accelerate their academic achievement trends over the past decade, including gains in readings and math achievement that outpace the national average. Now therefore be it resolved that the state of Massachusetts fulfill its commitment to maintain and support a system of free public elementary and secondary schools with the resources promised through the Student Opportunity Act. And be it further resolved that the chairperson and members of the Chelsea School Committee, joined with the superintendent of schools and urging the Massachusetts Congressional delegation, including our United States senators and House of Representative members, to advocate for and approve additional federal education funding, including the Student Opportunity Act for our nation's public schools. So team, this is a resolution, and I hope that we can count on your vote on Thursday. So before adjourning this meeting, I just want to thank those who are watching from home during this pandemic. I know it hasn't been easy for any of us. And so I just want to thank you for taking the time to listen to us, to view our budget. Remember to send us your comments, questions, we are more than happy to answer those questions. And then we will be voting on our budget on Thursday. So I would like to open it up to the school committee, are there any closing remarks before we adjourn this meeting?
Yeah, I just have a quick question, I think I missed an edit on the resolution, can we just go back to it quickly? I'm sorry about that. Just want to make sure, so are we asked, because the SOA is coming from the state legislature. So I just want to make sure, are we asking for federal resources to go to the state in order for SOA to be funded? Is that what the change was at the very bottom?
No, the ask is still the same. Yeah.
Further, if you could go down a little. Okay, okay, got it, so it's just be it further resolved, so it's like an additional piece there. Okay, sorry, I misread that part.
All righty, team, any other last questions or comments?
It looks good, Kelly, great job.
If we could speak to process for the next two nights?
Yeah, what's going on for the next two nights?
So tomorrow, because we're doing this virtually and it's a public hearing, we're going to collect all of the public comments, and people can email their comments to the email that is showing right now, publichearing@chelseaschools.com, our call 4617-466-450. And we will collect all of the public comments. And then we will present the public comments tomorrow. So tomorrow's meeting will open and it's public comments is what it is. And then we'll close our public hearing tomorrow. And then on Thursday, we will do a vote of a public hearing separately. And then we'll do a vote on SOA separately, and then we'll vote on the resolution separately. And the next two meetings are at 7 o'clock, same time, same Zoom invite, same place.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I just want to mention that a number of folks were trying to access the Facebook Live event early on in the meeting, and we did have some issues around that.
So we're going to go ahead and increase the amount. So we gave a deadline of 2 P M. for public comment, we'll change that to four. Because as soon as this meeting ends, we're going to get the whole entire presentations posted in full. So we're going to, we will up the time to make up for the lost time.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, this is Marissa, I just had a follow-up question about comments to be submitted. Given that we've done this Facebook Live today, is this information also being shared on the Chelsea Public Schools page?
Yes.
Okay, great, and thank you for that. And then the second thing is, I just wanted to reiterate to folks in the community and, you know, parents, in addition to, you know, teachers, I know that have been sharing their feedback, and it's been a great process to be in discussions with them. You know, that this committee is responsible for hearing your feedback, so please don't be shy. And please send those comments or questions to that email posted. In addition to individual, I can speak for myself here, that as District Three School Committee member, my email is available on the Chelsea Public Schools website, as well as every single member on the school committee. So just want to make sure that we give folks some time, you know, to connect with that. If you have any questions, you know, outside of submitting a direct comment, just want to reiterate that we make ourselves available for that. And then the last question I had, Dr. Beta, do you have a timeline for the city, part of the city council? In terms of when we finish here, we then present our budget to the city council? Have you been informed of any timeline around that?
I've been informed, the city council will do their budget, I believe it's more towards the end of May. And I don't have an exact date yet. One thing for public too, as you were saying, Monty, so we have the entire budget but posted on our website already. It's under the business and finance, if you go under budget, we'll post SOA. And then we will post this presentation on the front page of our website as well.
Thank you so much.
I just want people to know that Channel 22 is where you can watch these meetings.
Awesome, thank you, Ms. Carolisle, thank you, Ms. Santiago, and thanks to all of the members who had questions or comments. We will be adjourning this meeting at 8:25. Thank you all.
All right, have a good night, everybody.
And be safe.